Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to call to order our February 24th, 2022 Public Hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. I will have the commissioners who are present here introduce themselves, and why don't we start on the left this time with a mouthful?
Yeah, thank you. Butch Tracy.
Good morning, Tom Hutchison.
Ted Gamboji.
And we, yeah, we have our mayor here. Thank you, Mayor, for attending on that. City staff will introduce themselves when they make presentations or discussions and so forth. If I could ask all parties to check your phones and make sure it's on silent or off, would appreciate that. This is an open public hearing and is being taped, recorded, and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. There are four commission members present. It will take a vote of all four for something to pass. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name and address for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary on that. Okay, first item is the minutes of the January 13th, 2022 meeting. Are there any corrections? If no corrections, is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call the roll for the vote?
Yes. Butch Tracy.
I approve.
Thomas Hutchison.
Approve.
Ted Gamboji.
Approved.
Don Michaelman.
Approved.
Motion passes 4-0.
Next item on the agenda is under Regular Agenda Items, number three, PLN 21-004, revise, oops, excuse me, I missed one there. Sorry.
We have a presentation first.
The final presentation of Granite Creek Area Plan. Is Leslie here?
Leslie is in the Zoom room.
In the Zoom room. Leslie Dornfield is with Planet Communities. Leslie?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay. You're on. Do we need to repeat the presentation from last time, George, or just?
I think Leslie's going to do a recap of it for you and then maybe give you some additional information.
Okay, good. Okay, Leslie.
George, were you gonna say something?
Just a reminder to the folks here, Planning Commission did hear this before. Presentation is regarding a planning corridor that follows Granite Creek through downtown. That planning corridor is an area outside the actual creek. There's work the city has underway, design work underway for engineering of some improvements in the creek itself. This planning area borders it, so the intent is to try and produce a plan that will help guide development of those areas on either side of the creek through approximately four block length of the creek right through downtown. And I think in past experience from the presentation to you before, it's been a little while, so Leslie's probably going to give you a good preview of it, and then from that point forward, take any questions you have. The intent of today's meeting is to request an endorsement from this commission of the plan for it to be forwarded onto the City Council for consideration by council. The plan was reviewed and endorsed by the Preservation Commission. That's the other group that has a big stake in downtown. That Preservation Commission review occurred a couple of weeks ago, and we're now looking for a planning commission. Sorry, we're trying to share the screen so you can see the presentation. All right, Leslie, it's all on you.
He's on you, Leslie.
You're muted, Leslie.
Sorry. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say hello and just reintroduce myself to all of you. My name's Leslie Dornfield. My firm's Planet, and we've had the pleasure of working with you and some other entities in the city and the community on developing this plan for the Granite Creek area over the past year. I'm going to keep my video off during the presentation because it's a, some of the files are just big, and we use some interactive mapping, and I don't want to slow it down. So I'm, you're just going to get to see my icon, but I just wanted you to know that I'm here and I'm happy to be here. So with that, I'm going to turn my video off and just start off on the plan. I think most-
Leslie, this is George. Can you turn up your volume or speak a little louder?
Yeah.
You're coming across very lightly here, and some of our commissioners are having trouble.
Does that sound better? Am I louder now?
You're a little louder, but we're working on it. We're going to see if we can get it a little bit louder.
It might be the volume I'm doing. I'm like literally screaming into my mic.
Keep talking.
Hi, how are you doing?
Much better.
Ah, there we go. Okay. The only person that gets to hear me scream is my four-year-old. I don't want to put you through that. Anyway, good morning again, and I'm just gonna keep my video off so that we can work our way through the plan. There's some interactive files in it, and so it's just a little bit slow sometimes when I load up my computer with all these different pieces of information taking a bandwidth. I want to thank you for your time and just restate what a great time it's been spending the past year, working with the community and you and city staff on this plan. And I think we've gotten it to a point where it really reflects everybody's ideas and desires and is really talks to Prescott and what Prescott is about. Some of you should have gotten this plan, or all of you should have gotten this plan via email, so I don't know if you had some time to work through it, but it is an online document. And one of the reasons we chose this format with the city is, one, it keeps the plan alive. As amendments to the plan make up through or new mapping make up through, you can just change these things in real time. And also, the plan now is interactive. So anyone really interested in a particular piece of property within the area could literally click on that property and find out what the plan says about it and what it's all about. So it really provides a greater level of detail, and as time goes on, should the city choose, they can add any kind of detail they want to it. So it's a pretty powerful tool, and we're excited to be able to share that with you. The plan is in eight pieces. The first piece is just how do you navigate the plan? And it just, this is sort of instructions for people like me, which are newbies, but you can look at this plan on your phone as well as your computer, and you have the web link, and it'll just show you how to use the plan. Not going to spend a lot of time on navigating the plan, but some of the interesting features in this plan are you can click, for example, on a polygon or a parcel or an area, and it will tell you about it. You can also go to property. There's things called sidebars that you can click on. You can make them bigger if you want to see more detail, or you can, and then you can click on something in it. These are some photos that we took of the area to talk about some of the planning topics, and then you can also click over here to make it smaller. So it's a really cool little tool, and again, this navigating the online plan tells you how to use it. For some other pieces of information, within each section of the plan, all of these things here are, these are the kind of various plan areas that you can look at. So as you see, here are the eight topics in the plan, and this four squares brings you back to the plan cover or the beginning of the plan. Just so that everything got loaded, I'm going to work through each of these things a little bit separately, so I'm going to go through this plan a little bit differently than you might go through it at home. So again, this piece acknowledgements and executive summary, here are the two parts. You can click on either one and jump to it, but we just did want to acknowledge the plan. And one of the reasons, again, that I want to go through this is there were a lot of community members involved in the plan, business owners, people that were involved in non-for-profits, local businesses, people that were property owners in the area, and they've all seen this plan four times, and I think they're fairly supportive of it at this point. They never took a formal vote, but we didn't get any complaints. We did have a lot of city staff involvement. Planning Department was really great and really supportive, and we had a lot of involvement from the manager's office as well. The purpose of this plan really is to figure out how to leverage the city's investment in Granite Creek. The city's investing a lot in making that creek more usable and more beautiful, and we really want that investment to also benefit the downtown and Prescott's economy. The plan was really initiated by the property owners who came to the city, asked them for some help in how do we kind of take advantage of this investment, and then the city used CARES Act money to help fund this plan so that we really did have a strategy for moving forward as more people used the creek and the creek became more active. The planning area is outlined in this red line, and basically, the southern boundary of the plan is Aubrey Street, and then the northern boundary of the plan is sort of the Pioneer Park. The eastern boundary of the plan is generally Montezuma Street, but what I want to stress is that we do not include in this planning area the frontage of Montezuma Street across from the Courthouse Plaza, but the alley, Whiskey Row Alley, is included in the plan. And that's significant one because this is part of the historic area, and this frontage here really belongs to this part of the downtown as, you know, as we know it, as we kind of recognize it in the core. There's a lot of historic districts and properties in the plan, and so this diagram shows you not only the historic districts, but it also shows you the historic properties within the plan. And the green properties are what are called contributing. So many of you know that when you form a district, a historic district, there are properties that contribute to the wholeness of that district, and then there are properties that are there, but they don't necessarily contribute. So the blue properties are what we call non-contributing. So this area, which is the North Prescott Historic District, spreads on both sides of the planning area. There are not design guidelines for this district yet, but I understand that they are in process. This little teeny yellow area here and here is the Courthouse Plaza portion of the district, and the Courthouse Plaza includes the Courthouse Plaza as well. And then south of Courthouse Plaza, starting at more or less Goodwin Street, again, to the east of the planning area is the South Prescott Historic District. And it's important to know about these historic districts because we have design guidelines in the plan, and should you develop in a historic district, the historic district design guidelines prevail. So this plan's design guidance doesn't speak to the historic building. Some of the other guidance does, but the design guidance does not, and we just want to make that very, very clear. So we have information about it all through the plan. We repeat this map and this information all through the plan. Historic properties comprise about 60 properties of the 130 to 140 properties in the area, and it's about 30% of the land area. So the way we are suggesting this plan get implemented, and I'm happy to take any questions about this, is to be adopted as a policy document. So what that means, there's different ways you can adopt plans in Arizona. The law gives you a lot of different choices. One way you could adopt it would be a specific plan. That's a very unique adoption process. It has special notice requirements, but a specific plan has the force of zoning, and in fact, it can override zoning. The plan could be, that's in state law, the plan could be adopted as an overlay district. In the case of Prescott, your ordinance identifies overlay districts and gives them zoning power, which is a very important and strong power, but that would require amending your zoning ordinance. Again, a separate process and very extensive notice requirements. And the one thing to remember is when you have an extensive process to adopt a plan, you also have an extensive process to amend a plan. The last piece, another way that can be adopted is policy document, which is what we're suggesting. And what a policy document can be adopted by resolution, and really what it does is it gives direction to city staff from city leaders that says, this is what we want you to do. And so when planning and zoning reviews plans, reviews site plans, maybe looks at some of the design, they can use the guidance in this plan to encourage development, types of uses, and design within the Granite Creek area. What's also nice about a policy document is it's more easily amended. It would just really require amendment by the Planning Commission and the City Council. So it's a much cleaner and simpler way to adopt the document, and it provides it with more flexibility. And for this document, that's important because this is a very long-term plan. As you've heard me say before, you know, Gilbert is the 20-year overnight success story, the longest overnight success story in Arizona. We do believe that Granite Quarter will be an overnight success story, but it will take some time to happen. The plan was developed with a lot of community input, and you can go through all of the presentations by clicking on any of the things in the planning process, but it did include a full day plus a focus group where we met with recreation and business owners, realtors, civic groups, we met with planning staff, really, we met with folks that were involved in Granite Creek, really to talk about what they felt was important, what they felt would need to be done in the area. We also toured the area with about 30 stakeholders for about a half a day back in January of 2021. We had two online community meetings where we had about, I'd say, anywhere between around 15 to 20 people at each of those meetings. We didn't really get a lot of unhappy comments. Most people were fairly okay with the plan at those meetings. And then that working group that I showed you the list of at the beginning, we had four meetings with them so that they were able to really review and comment on the plan. And then we also presented to you before, we've had, this will be actually, I think, our third presentation to you on the plan. We had a briefing of the plan, and then this one. We've had three briefings to City Council as well, or we'll have three by the time we go to them. And then we also met separately with the Pedestrian Bicycle Traffic Advisory Committee where we got some good feedback. We met with the business owners in a meeting online. We met with Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, actually twice, I need to update this, and we also met with the Chamber of Commerce. And I have to say, overall, the comments were fairly positive. I think, you know, there were some little details around the edges people wanted addressed, but we had fairly significantly good comments. So that's really the planning process and an overview of why the plan is here and how we got there. And with respect to Mr. Michaelson, I think what we'll do is give you the somewhat abridged version and then identify some of the specific changes we've made in response to comments. So does that work for anyone, or does someone want a more in-depth briefing? And I'm thinking if you just want to interrupt me, we could dive into any particular topic.
I think proceeding that way works well.
Yeah, okay. So the five big ideas guiding the plan have stayed pretty much the same. The first big idea is to next-gen the downtown. One of the things that we recognized as part of this plan included an economic step. Prescott right now is the economic engine of northern Arizona. When you look at the Prescott North area around the airport, it's growing. It's sort of a very different kind of community than Prescott has been traditionally. It's much more focused on aviation and tech. There's a lot of housing going in. It's a different kind of a population, a little bit younger than traditionally been in Prescott. We need to provide a place for those people that kind of keeps them in the community, provides some diversity, but we also need to make sure that Prescott saves the regional attraction to tourists. And as we look at the region, you know, Prescott Valley is gonna, is outstripping you in terms of population, and we need to make sure it doesn't outstrip you in terms of economy. Right now, you are the economic leader due to food and beverage, but we're looking at figuring out ways of diversifying this area and making it more attractive for other reasons than why people come to the historic, traditional downtown. One of the big ways that this could happen, and our second big idea, is to connect. And this drawing shows how we want to connect the quarter to Granite Creek. I think I read about 60,000 people use Granite Creek a year. That's a huge number, but we want to figure out ways to take a portion of that 60 and bring them out into the community, into the downtown, so that maybe they bike or walk down the creek and stop for a cup of coffee or steal a cool t-shirt, do something like that. The third idea is to incentivize development. There's a lot of barriers to development in the Granite Creek area, particularly you're in a floodplain, development costs are expensive. We've got some ideas to make development less expensive, to relieve some of that burden from landowners so that it makes it more economically feasible for them to develop within the downtown and within the quarter, and also shows them what a cool area this quarter could be. The fourth big idea is design, and this is really intended to give the quarter a little bit of a separate identity, but also to help the development of buildings and the site design that will be attractive to the new kinds of uses that might be appropriate that we're talking about for the next-gen concept. And then the last idea is wayfinding. This is what I would call wayfinding light. We weren't really scoped to do a full sign plan, but we did get as far as giving you a menu of sign types and sign locations and a purpose for your signing so that overall, when you decide to move forward with a sign plan, you can start with this, this piece of information. So talk just a little bit about the next-gen idea. And again, just to remind you, these are the different sections within each chapter, and each one of these sections is a strategy within the next-gen concept. And as we move to the other sections, the same area here will show you the different strategies within the sections. So when we talk about the unique identity, as you remember, we divided the quarter into three areas. The Work Precinct, where it's really focused on business, office employment, things like that. The Play Precinct, which is really entertainment-based, it really builds off of the existing downtown and the downtown, historic downtown, and then the Live Precinct, which is an area where we really want to begin to bring people to live in the downtown. One of the things that we learned in our focus groups and also through our research is the people that are living downtown are typically poorer and older than who is in Prescott. And what we really want to bring to the downtown to begin to revitalize the economy is people that are more reflective of the typical Prescott resident. We don't want to get rid of people, but we want to bring in more people so that they can begin to use the shops and the amenities that are in the downtown and really create a more vibrant area. And then we're also recommending within this unique identity to sign each area. Some of the actions under creating this unique land use would be, one, to create, would be to create this overlay district, but also through adoption of the plan, which would be a policy district, but then to encourage different kinds of uses. So we talk about the different kinds of uses that could occur within the downtown, and these are uses that really promote redevelopment, a lot of them build on local capacity. One idea is this idea of maker space, where people actually do their fabrication in the building and sell from the front. We're not talking about large-scale maker space. A lot of this is smaller types of maker space, but artisans could use this, but leather crafters, things like that. These have really been helpful. Another kind of space is co-working space. This is completely common now. It used to be a new idea. It is an old idea, and everyone co-works. I'm sure many of you are familiar with Kahoots, kind of the Arizona starter. I think they've got national at this point. Creating live-work space is really important. Creating these kinds of places within the downtown could really be helpful. These are also live-work units, so they can look in a bunch of different ways, but the key part is that the way they're built is to allow someone to work within the unit. And then also to activate the alley, so allow development to begin to face the alley and also face the creek. This is a development that was constructed, this is a vision for the Roosevelt Row Alley in downtown Phoenix, but this kind of development exists. And then we also want to make sure that development is appropriate. So one of the things that we do talk about is the Mile High School. And Mile High School, the school is looking at, you know, building a new high school building. If that happens, things are going to just move around in the district, and we spoke with the district about this. They're not unhappy with this, but we do know that there are some real opportunities to take the Mile High School and convert that to a residential development. We know that there's some buildings on that site that are historic. Any kind of a residential development would have to respect the historic character or the historic buildings. That would be up to your Historic Preservation Department. The field would also now become an opportunity for redevelopment, redevelopment with some phenomenal creek frontage. This could really create a different place. And as I said before, you've heard me say this in my little soapbox speech, Prescott is so completely unique with Granite Creek in it that it could really become a one-of-a-kind place in Arizona and possibly the larger region. Another opportunity site we see is the school bus stop. We think that could probably be activated earlier. It's a huge opportunity for residential or for mixed-use development, and we could maintain the bus stop access there as well. So we think these are three opportunities that could really begin to transform the This is some of the opportunity sites that we've identified in the downtown. I want to be really clear about this. We're not recommending, we're not even saying, we're thinking that the city should purchase these sites or force redevelopment, but we think that by pointing out opportunities, the property owners might begin to think a little bit differently about what's in front of them. And again, you can click on any one of these blocks, and we talk about the kinds of uses that could occur in them. And then managing stormwater is very important in this area. There's very little we're going to be able to do to bring it out of the flood zone, so we do know that we want to work on figuring out ways to just keep those flows low, low as possible. And then finally, also creating some built elements like murals and things like that to really connect the area. This is in Albuquerque, all of the entrances to a water source in one of their communities. I think it's a tributary to the Rio Grande. They have these wonderful mosaic floors at them so you know where you are within the The next idea, connect, is a, is a pretty key to making all of this happen, and really what it includes is creating a pedestrian alley, activating it, forming mid-block connections, enhancing the walk environment, providing bicycle facilities, and doing things to improve circulation, which would include in the very long run in the north portion of the district, building a garage to accommodate parking, not only for the new city hall, but new development that comes and for visitors that come into the district. The idea of the pedestrian-friendly alley would be to extend the alley that is now Whiskey Row Alley, south and north, and create links to the creek. So you would have this complete link so people could come out of the link at any point in time. And I'm just skipping through here to make it a little shorter, and then opening up the creek and providing better access to the alley through these mid-block connections that we're recommending. And the plan has a bunch of strategies about ways this could happen and how it could work. Key to extending this alley is to activating it. This is something that could happen with the downtown Prescott partnership, I think it is, or through merchants independently, but really activating the alley. And these are all examples of alleys that have been branded and activated. Doesn't take a lot of money. You can literally do short-term movable types of things in the beginning. People begin to catch on, and then over time, you can really begin to improve it. There are lots of ways you can improve the alley, which they open for truck traffic, open for deliveries, garbage cans can get decorated, it makes them more of an attraction. It could be sort of what the alley is even known for. This is Music Alley. Every month, a local high school has a marching band that comes down the alley. Vendors come, bars put out, you know, outside beverage areas, and it's a celebration. There's farmers' markets in some alleys. There's different ways to activate them. This alley has a picnic day. They put down fake grass, and everybody comes and has a picnic. It's just ways to bring people into the quarter and make them aware that it exists. Over time, you can add green infrastructure to this alley, which will help reduce stormwater flows, and you can also use green infrastructure as you move through your area in these mid-block crossings that we're recommending. Just in terms of circulation, some of the things I want to point out is, and these are from Gilbert, by the way, so just so that you know, we're not going to really crazy places. Gilbert's already created these ride-share zones, multimodal pickup zones for their downtown. They're aware of the importance ride-share has, especially for an entertainment-based community, and that's- and that's their downtown has very much become that. We're recommending that these can be created within the quarter. You can create multi-modal hubs where the bus stops, you can pick up a bike, you can walk, you can pick up a local circulator, that there is some traffic coming. This is from the National Association of City Transportation Officials, NACTO, they have a lot of guidelines on how this can be done. And then also to clearly increase parking capacity, we have some suggestions in there for that. And again, all of our recommendations are divided into short, mid, and long term, and ultimately, we are recommending a retail wrapped garage in the north area of the district to provide parking and provide access. Our third big idea is incentivize. And this idea speaks to how can we reduce costs? So there's a couple of ways that you're able to do this through Arizona state law. One of them is called an enhanced service district. What that does is it's called a bid, a business improvement district. The property owners activate this district, and it's run by the property owners in partnership with the city, where they determine how they want to tax themselves to raise money for additional security and marketing improvements. Just about every vital downtown in Arizona has an active bid. Tucson has one, Flagstaff has one, downtown Phoenix has one. And they really give a lot more power and allow an area to do things earlier than the city might want to go ahead and do them. So it allows the property owners to direct how they want to spend their tax money. Another recommendation that we're making is do a little bit more work for marketing the area. So maybe monitor sales tax collections, maybe create a page on the city's website. So if somebody wants to sell their property or lease their property, they can say for lease, you know, sales in this area are, here's the traffic numbers. This makes it more attractive to people, and they begin to see what, what the assets of the district are. One of the things that came out of our discussion with one of our council members, and it was a great topic, is to really leverage the creek's amenities to promote certain types of businesses. You know, we have a picture of a bird here. Birding is one of the, birding people are the richest ecotourists around, they just have tons of money. And so, you know, maybe creating more stores that cater to birding, or to biking, or to hiking along the creek. So begins to create a vibe that really connects this area to the creek economically as well as physically. And then also designating the area redevelopment area. A redevelopment area by state laws is an area that has trouble redeveloping because of physical impediments. And, and the physical impediment that really impacts Granite Creek in particular is the flood zone. So we do feel that this is an easy thing that the city can do, and the strength of creating this redevelopment area and designating this area in the general plan, part of the city's core, is that it allows the city to use GIPlet, which is a government property lease excise tax. Just about every large building or every building in Phoenix, in the downtown initially was built with GIPlet. Now Phoenix is quite selective about how they use them. Florence did this, so they could use GIPlet, Flagstaff uses GIPlet. And although the city doesn't have a lot of taxes, it excises all tax. So for a period of eight years, school tax, county tax is abated, and the city owns the property for those eight years, and it allows developers to have a more economic way of building and getting a project off the ground. This is all related to the GIPlet. And then also to continue to just mitigate the risk of flooding. We know that that's been an ongoing issue. And then there are also some things we can just do to reduce plain development cost. This building has already been built, I forgot the name of it, the root place, but by just getting rid of permit fees, quickening the permit process, and just making it easier to build and develop in the downtown. And I might say, your city planning department already does a lot of this, just about everyone we spoke with only had good things to say about planning. So we know that everyone's doing what they can now. This just more or less puts it into a, a policy. You know, this is something we really want to focus on, and also give some direction for some other things we can do. Probably the most amount of comments we got on this plan was in the design section. And I think most of the comments were really that we didn't pay enough attention to the historic areas, there was some confusion about the applicability of the design guidelines with regards to historic areas and some of our reference images. So this section is the, of the section of the plan where we've had the most changes. This is just the map. We put this, just for your information, the reason we repeat this map in every section, and we repeat certain things in every section, is if you're a developer, you're not going to want to read through the whole plan, you're just going to go to the area you're most interested in. So we didn't want anyone to not know. So some of this stuff is repetitive. So here you see again how the design guidelines can be applied, we talk about the historic areas, we again restate the fact that if you're in a historic area, you're going to follow those historic design guidelines. We talk about, you know, historic districts and properties, but what's important is, as new development occurs, it really needs to reflect the architectural identity of the downtown by using some of the architectural elements that are there, we explain the precincts and how those apply. Then we talk about how the design principles can be applied. We talk about from a design perspective, walkable connections, so the, so the connect element talked about where they should be and how you could build them. In the design section, we talk about what they could look like, and how they could be designed, and how they could be built. We talk a lot in this section about what to do with creek side frontage. It's really important to this plan, that buildings adjacent to the creek, open up to the creek. And we've looked at the right of way, you do have adequate right of way to put in creek side amenities. And again, this really creates a different kind of a place in your downtown. This is actually, I think it's Great Falls, and I was there this summer, and I can't remember the name, the last summer, I take that back. But they took along their river, which admittedly is much larger than Granite Creek, and they put in ping pong tables and picnic tables, and they have pool tables. It's really neat. And people were just out there using them, and it's really cool. And their historic downtown starts here and moves to the back. There are a lot of things you can do adjacent to the creek. You can plant things, you can do wayfinding, it just create a really integrated and rich environment. In walkable connections, we also talk about how to enrich the alleys and what that could look like, some of the principles you want to think about, furniture amenities. Here's a part of an alley in Prescott, so how we could re-change those alleys and really step them up and make them look a little bit different. And again, you can see all of this stuff, it's movable interim stuff and murals. So it's to start, it's not a big step, and you've already started a little bit with some murals and improvements again to the Whiskey Row Alley. And then also, we talk about in the design section, what those mid-block crossings could look like, and what they could do using pavers and planters. So now we're getting into the three different districts within the downtown and the design for them. And each district, you could have any use in any district, but each district has a different emphasis. So within the work district, we're emphasizing buildings that really provide office uses and, and provide live workspace with the emphasis on the work, or retail workspace with the emphasis on the work. So here are some building topology, some of the buildings that could get built. And then we talk about the principles of how these buildings should get built, and then some of the, and then specific guidance for each of the principles, harmonizing, building massing, creating frontages that are catching to your eye, important design elements and visual design. And you'll see these principles are generally the same within each precinct, it's the design guidance to achieve them that shifts a little bit. And these have all been reviewed by the community and the store preservation commission, the planning department, and nobody really has any issues with them, they're fairly comfortable with them. In the play precinct, again, you can see some different building types. Here, the emphasis is on retail and entertainment, that allows offices on top or working on top, but we don't really want to see a bottom floor frontage that would be an office. And in this section, we have a what it could look like. And this example shows how some of these different design principles and guidelines could be applied to make a really pleasing place. This could be Granite Creek over here, and this could be something behind it. Here's another view, this could be Granite Creek over here, and you can see development behind it. This is a little bit higher scale than we would envision for Granite Creek, but what we really wanted to focus on was this frontage image of entertainment and people just relaxing by the creek and enjoying it. And then again, you have each of the design principles outlined in terms of design guidelines, and how those could be applied. And again, you know, one of the things I'd say is, you can't envision it, or maybe Granite Creek now, I'm not a very visual person, but if anybody knew what Gilbert looked like twenty years ago, and they go down to Gilbert today, this is the kind of development they're going to see in downtown Gilbert. So these kinds of places can happen at a very small and intimate scale. The last concept is the live precinct, again, building topologies, how those could be applied. This could be developed on a site in the downtown, possibly on the school site. This is wrapped, residential wrapped with retail, and you can see how those different The last section is wayfinding. And again, we talk about the package of materials that are really needed to create a great visitor experience. We talk about different sign types. And we also have a wayfinding map, so it shows you where the different sign types would get placed. We have a palette of colors that we suggest, and then what those signs could look like. And we did a few concepts. And then this is the recommended sign family that came from public comment. So that's pretty much the plan. You can see we've changed a lot of the imagery out, we've updated some of the economic portions of it, and we're happy to hear any comments and discussion. With that, George, I guess, or Brendan, you want to?
Thank you, Leslie. I guess we can hand it over to commissioners if you have comments, questions, specific statements. Again, what we're looking for ultimately is to see if the commission will endorse the plan and move it on to the city council, as we do with many other things that come before you. Again, this is a proposal as a policy document for council, it will guide council's decisions as well as staff decisions in the future. It's not code, but it gives us some direction, and that is often very helpful when it comes to city staff especially, because we often interact with folks very, very, very early in their development process. They may have only a concept in mind, long before it comes here. And if we can give them something or point them to something that says, this is what we're looking for, it will help them further along and move their, their potential development plan through to you in a much faster and much more efficient manner.
Okay. Commission members, anybody have any comments or questions for Leslie?
I have a few. Leslie, I think it was Stephen Covey's second habit that said, begin with the end in mind. And I think you've done a pretty good job of presenting what it may look like in the future. I think there's another guy, Nate H. Ross Perot once said, the devil's in the details. And what I've seen in his presentation is everything in the kitchen sink, so that any one person could look at one portion of this. Like if you, if you're a birder, then you see a bird, you're, say, yeah, I agree with this. But when you agree with this, you agree with a lot of things that you've presented. And, and I think it would behoove everyone involved to break this into component parts. We need to clean up Granite Creek. So that's step one. And what's that look like when Granite Creek is just plain clean? And then, as you proceed, there's another number of steps that we ought to have agreement, what's it look like when it's done? So that if there are five steps, we know what step one looks like when it's done, step two looks like when it's done, so that we can narrow the focus of what the final project look like, looks like. Because right now, it looks like everything to everybody, I don't think anybody can afford the final product as presented.
Councilman, Commissioner, that's a great comment, and I really appreciate it. I'm going to just take it apart a little bit. You mentioned a couple of things. One, this needs to be broken down into manageable pieces. We have done that in the plan, and within each of these sections, there are short, mid, and long-term actions. Now remember, this plan isn't about cleaning Granite Creek, it's about what happens on the side of it. So, once the creek is clean, well, what do you do? And so, while the creek is getting cleaned, there are some things we can begin to put in place, and those would be the short-term actions within the first three years. So for example, and I just clicked on the Mile High School one, we know right now they're trying to build a new high school. Maybe now is the time to open a dialogue to say, well, if you build that school, what's going to happen to Mile High Middle School, so it doesn't become a gaping hole in our downtown? And what can we begin to do to make sure that it continues to contribute? So that might be a discussion that gets opened up in the short term. Then, maybe we begin to talk about reuse in the midterm. So each of the strategies has this very manageable chunk of actions. The second thing you talked about was paying for it. Most of this plan is not going to be paid for out of public dollars. Most of this plan will occur as development occurs. So if a developer or a property owner wants to build something, or renovate their building, or change their zoning, this is when the, the staff would have an opportunity to look at the plan and say, for example, you know, hey, you want to put a gas station here? We're not really thinking of gas stations in the Granite Creek quarter, we're thinking of these kinds of uses. It also gives ideas to property owners to say, hey, you know, maybe there's a market for this kind of stuff out here, my building really isn't producing having that old used clothing store in it, I can't really get the rent I want out of it, maybe it's worth it to look at my building, see what other kinds of uses I could put in it that would pay a higher rent and maybe finance some renovations. So again, these are short, mid, and long-term actions that would come through development, not the city going in and doing major construction. Even the alley strategies are divided into short, mid, and long term, so that as things occur, this is the first step, here's the second step, exactly as you said, and then here's the third step. A lot of the alley actions could come through, for example, things that property owners do themselves that are low cost, and then over time, if revenues increase substantially, the city might say, you know, it's a time for us to maybe invest as well. So there's opportunities to have this go both ways. Within the connect area, there's something called temporary enhancements, they're called quick fix design solutions. There are things you can do with paint that are very low cost, I think I have a picture of quick fix that I was looking for. But they're really great tools, and I'll give you an example of where we used to quick fix. On Lower Grand Avenue in Phoenix, we did a plan where we used to quick fix, and happened to be a bunch of artists, and they painted different crosswalks. Well, ten years later, and about five hundred jobs later, and about forty new businesses later, the city is now beginning to invest in rain gardens and curb bump outs, because they've realized that area is an economic engine. So it's not a city, a big city investment, it's an individual investment, it's something that will come through development. And again, the plan organizes actions into those short, mid, and long-term steps that you spoke about, so we're not throwing everything against the wall and seeing what sticks.
Any other questions or comments from commission members?
Yeah, Leslie, thank you for this presentation. If you're looking for my impressions, it's, it has to do with how does this plan dovetail with the city's, let's say, superordinate objectives? How, how does this fit in with better schools? How does this fit in with improved parking? How does this fit in with disabled access? How does this fit in with all the things that, affordable housing, things that we believe or we might believe we're going to need to do in the future with this? I think we have an aging population. You know, does this, does this satisfy the needs of that aging population? So, so my impression was, how does this dovetail? How does this fit in with, with the new five-year plan we're about to develop? And I think that would be very useful for me to understand more about this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchison, Bren Stotler, Director of Community Development. That is just such a pivotal question, and I think that we're at a point in time where we have a great opportunity here. The, to Commissioner Gambogi's point about the cleanup of the creek, there's a separate process and a separate master and a separate master plan in its entirety that addresses just the creek, does not address the components that align with the creek throughout these three precincts that Leslie has presented. And so I think what we have here is a lens within which to have conversations as redevelopment occurs, as we have projects come forward that are in the downtown business area and are either posed next to the creek or adjacent to creekside businesses where we have an opportunity to introduce design concepts and wayfinding and a common vision that actually embraces the downtown historic nature and also brings us forward a little bit. So we did watch demographics as we entered into this planning process. Leslie and her team looked at economics of our region and traffic circulation and all of the components of a really good area plan. This plan actually will dovetail nicely with our general plan process that we're getting ready to launch into. We have a 10-year update of our general plan that is poised to be completed by 2025. And I think that this plan actually gives us a good opportunity to utilize downtown features and create that common vision with redevelopment projects. We actually have a couple of really big adjacent properties that are poised to redevelop and have just come to light. So some of these plan implementation facets can actually be seen in the built environment in the near future incrementally, as Leslie mentioned.
Bryn, I was interested in satisfying this idea that we don't have the answer before we know what the question is. What is it we're really trying to do?
Well, I think, yeah.
That explains a lot, so thank you for that.
Great, absolutely.
Any other questions from commission members?
Stan has a question.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to announce that Mr. Galagoski is here, so you have Commissioner Galagoski with a question.
Well, welcome, Stan. What's your question?
I didn't raise my hand because I, you know, I do view this as, this is strictly addressing the entertainment value of the downtown. It's an economic driver, right? And as we look at areas such as where the founding fathers has developed, we now have the food truck court that they just put the fence around, you know, the corner of Willis and Monizuma. You know, that is an area that, you know, I've been very impressed with the way that people are coming in looking to enhance the area. Our city hall, our new city hall is going to be across the street. You know, I'm impressed with what the city has done with putting up the city building up for bid that's just at the base of where the Blind Brothers offices are there on Willis. You know, there is, to Commissioner Hutchison's point, one thing that wasn't covered is the parking. It's already becoming a very congested area around where the new Hilton is, where the Sand Hill Warehouse is. And so that's something that, you know, if we look at our parking garage that's several blocks away from that location. So something that I would encourage us to really look at as far as we're planning, you know, for the entertainment value, we really do have to address that parking place. And any bid that has come forward to the city for that new building, if there's a component in there that addresses the parking, you know, that's forward-thinking here. So what I would say is, you know, again, the plan, I would wholeheartedly endorse moving forward as a, you know, as a commission. There will be more details, but I tell you, there are a lot of people moving in here that are forward-thinking, that see that area as being vibrant and knowing that there will be a cleanup of the court, the Granite Creek itself eventually as we get enough grant money to move forward.
Thank you, Stan. Butch?
Yeah, first off, Leslie, nice presentation. Again, it was great. But my question, actually, probably for George. The, what's this, are we in the floodplain in Granite Creek? Is that a floodplain area? Okay.
Most of the corridor that Leslie's planning document covers is impacted by floodplain or floodway in some fashion.
Okay. And I mean, I missed it. Does she have an overlay map of that in any of this?
There is a plan map as part of the plan that indicates where the floodways are. There are two converging creeks with floodways on each of those creeks, so that is a major issue. And I think one of the concepts that Leslie pointed out is that at some point, the city's improvement to the creek, which is a separate project, cleanup and improvement of the creek will help with some of that. But ultimately, the cost of construction or cost of redevelopment on either side of the creek is impacted by the floodway. And things that we may be able to do, ideas that are presented in the plan, we may be able to do to reduce those costs to the developer or building owner are going to be positive steps.
George, I don't know if I'm turned off, but you can see where the floodplain is. That's in the plan.
Yeah, we're not seeing your screen, Leslie. We see the plan. Yeah, we see the main plan.
It says my screen sharing is paused. Oh, resume share. There we go. I'm sorry.
There you go. Very good. So the blue is bad. That's floodway. And the purple is less bad. That's floodplain. Most of the area is affected by one or the other of those, and expensive engineering is often required when you're doing major renovations to buildings. So knowing that there may be ways that the city can offset some of the costs that we incur. Now, the city charges permit fees and impact fees and all of these things to offset the costs so that the general public isn't paying for private developers' benefit. But in some cases, those redevelopments give a broader city benefit, and it's worth using taxpayer funds to do that. So reducing a permit fee, for instance, means that we're covering the cost with taxpayer money instead of development money. But in these cases, you often can trigger a major redevelopment simply by reducing a cost like that. And once you get one major development occur, you may get a snowball effect or a domino effect.
Does the city fall under the same rules and regs as the general public when it comes to Corps of Engineers and the floodways and that kind of thing? Or is there offsetting it with engineering through the city? Does that take care of that?
The city is subject to all of the same rules. We may be even subject to a higher level of rules in some cases. We do have the ability to use our own engineering staff to assist, and we've done that. We're doing that partly with the work that's being done on the creek improvements themselves. So City Engineering Department is participating in that process pretty heavily.
Okay. All right, thank you. I have one other question. The alleys and alleyways, are they, does the city own them or are they easements across private property? And are those buildings, you know, do they go to a center line or is there something owned by the city that, because I'm thinking like they show all these different shops, different things, you know, and possibly that's a revenue for the city, I would hope, you know, not only tax, but maybe lease areas or whatever. But that's my question.
Almost universally, they're publicly owned. The alleys are city rights of way, just like the streets are. There are a few cut-throughs, connections between places that are actually across private property, but the majority of the alleys are, in fact, all of the alleys belong to the city of Prescott. The benefit of trying to use those alleys, providing them access to potentially to the backsides of buildings, is to encourage that economic engine to spill out of the building into the open air. And you know our weather here, other than yesterday, is pretty conducive to having outside events and activities and using the alleys for some of those things. Good planning practice. It's used elsewhere very effectively.
And I guess I did have another question. Sorry. Is the city subject to the same FEMA insurance requirements, like flood insurance requirements that we see, you know, that the private sectors? I wonder, do you have any idea? Apparently, we don't pay for it.
Well, you won the prize. You stumped me today. I'm not positive of that. I'm pretty sure the answer is yes, but I'm not 100% sure. The city is subject to all of the other FEMA requirements, so I would expect that that also affects the insurance.
And when I say the city, I mean, a lot of this is private business that are going to be in this area and then probably subject to those. And they're quite expensive, that flood insurance.
Those are actually some of the things that offsetting the cost through reduced building permit fees or things like that can help a property owner. If they know they're going to pay more insurance, but their building permitting to do the remodeling is less expensive, those things can offset some.
All right, thank you, George. I appreciate it. Thank you, Leslie.
Any other comments or questions by the commission members? Now, we can open this up for the public to make a comment too, can't we, at this time?
Certainly.
Anybody from the public would like to make a comment or question on that? If not, we'll proceed with doing a motion concerning endorsing this. Before we do, I want to mention that I was a part of this committee, but I have no financial involvement with anything here or would affect me. So I believe that will still allow me to vote on this, right, Matt?
You're good.
Okay.
If you don't have a proprietary or pecuniary personal interest or any of your relatives have a proprietary or pecuniary interest, you do not have a vote.
I do not, so.
Just for the record, what Matt said was something legalese, but you're okay.
Yes.
That'll be reflected in the minutes that way.
I think it reduces down to you're okay.
You're good. All right.
We're not going to, what we do, we have a motion to whether we endorse the plan or not endorse it to move it on to the city council.
You have a couple of options. So you, one of you can make a motion to recommend endorsing the plan and recommend it to the city council. You can also, by conversation between you, make a consensus or reach a consensus that you're in favor of the plan. I think the motion option is the cleanest and clearest when it goes to council to see that you said we like it and you voted on it.
Okay. Before we do or have a motion on it, I want to say we do have five commission members present at this, one by Zoom, and we'll take a vote of four on this. Is there a motion concerning this item? Butch?
No, I was going to ask, how would we put forward a motion?
It is a, a motion to endorse. A motion to endorse the plan and forward it to the city council for?
I move to endorse the plan and forward it to the city council.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I would second it. Butch Tracy.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any further questions or comments? If not, Kaylee, would you call the roll for the vote?
Okay, Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yeah, I endorse it.
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Did your kid vote?
Yes.
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 Ted Gambogi?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Leslie, for taking time to present this to us. We appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone, for such great questions and for taking the time to review it. I really appreciate it, and we'll be seeing you again for Prescott North. So thanks again.
Okay. Now, we go to number three. PLN 21-004, revised preliminary plat of Hidden Hills subdivision phases two and three, APN 106-04-001L and 106-04-001N. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask Tammy, am I?
Can you share your screen?
Need to share it again?
Can you share it?
Screen two.
Screen two.
How's that?
There you are.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this is a request to revise the preliminary plat for Hidden Hills subdivision. You saw this preliminary plat about a year ago, requesting layout of the subdivision, typical preliminary plat process. After that process, the developer of the subdivision began work on phase one. If you recall, the plat initially had a phase one and a phase two. They began work on phase one, and as a result of some of the grading work that was done, they realized they had a lot of additional leftover dirt that could be reused on the site rather than hauled off, which is a great expense and often not good for the environment because you don't know where it ends up. In this particular case, their request was to modify the preliminary plats phase two into a combination of phase two and phase three. So phase two is being split into two phases, two and three. Phase one, which they began work on some time ago, probably six months or more ago, is not being changed. So phase one remains exactly as you approved it. The revision is only to phase two. The changes to phase two include an additional 20 lots above what was approved when you saw this last. So the original subdivision plat had 151 lots, and the proposal now adds 20 additional lots with 13 of those being in phase three and the remaining seven in phase two. And I'll show you some diagrams in just a moment. Give you an idea of the location of the property. It is immediately west of Pinion Oaks subdivision. That's the area here. It is north of Pioneer Park, which is here, and it was annexed into the city about 10 years ago, along with annexation of parts of Deepwell Ranch.
George, can you show the connector?
There is a new roadway that was permitted through this property that will connect here, and this is Pioneer Parkway. So access will be from an intersection at Commerce Drive. So Commerce Drive runs through back to Willow Creek Road. That extension of the roadway goes up to and into the subdivision, and you'll see that better with the next couple of drawings I have. And that access will be only from Pioneer Parkway. There is no proposed interconnection with Pinion Oaks, though there are potential stubstreets that could have connected. There are elevation differences that make that expensive and nearly impossible. Again, just to give you a general aerial, you can see its location, proximity to the airport, and proximity to the development that's in the county to the west of it and Pinion Oaks to the east of it. The yellow lots are those phase one lots that were part of the original preliminary plat. The blue lots are the phase two lots, again, original preliminary plat. So changes were made to that, which I'll show you in just a moment. But one interesting thing, I've noted in green up there, and I apologize, that looked way better on my computer than it does up on the screen. The open space for the overall subdivision was at 33.8%. That's well above the minimum 20 that they needed to do a planned area development, which is what they proposed. The planned area development approach allows for the smaller lots, the cul-de-sacs with the smaller lots on them, reducing the setbacks and reducing the lot sizes below the zoning minimum. So the zoning is SF18, the same as for Pinion Oaks, which normally would require 18,000 square foot lots. But under a PAD, the lots can be smaller, and you'll note in the staff report, we talked about some of those lot sizes getting down into the 9,000 range. Because of the PAD, they're required to offset the reduction in lots with larger areas of open space that are accessible to the subdivision. They don't have to be public open space, but they have to be open space for the subdivision, and they've done that. The minimum requirement is 20%, and again, they're at 33.8% with the original preliminary plat. The proposed change to the plat, the revision, again, and I apologize, my, wow, need to stop touching the mouse. The area is here where most of the changes have occurred. There have been some changes to this area, which now becomes phase three. So phase two is this cul-de-sac, this cul-de-sac, and this cul-de-sac, and it counts for 73 lots. 13 lots left in this area, and you'll note from the previous, I'm not going to try and use the mouse, there were a few lots in that area that were part of phase two originally. The number has changed. There are larger lots and more of them in that area as opposed to what was in the original phase two at that very far west end of the subdivision. So the 20 additional lots that we, that I mentioned a few moments ago that are part of the subdivision request, the revision request, are primarily within phase two with some additional in phase three to account for the difference there. And interestingly enough, because of the arrangement of the lots, the And interestingly enough, because of the arrangement of the lots, the open space is now 34.8%. They actually gained a percent of open space by the reconfiguration, which is kind of interesting. 20 more lots, but another percent of open space. Part of the reason for that, again, is because under PAD, you can make the lot smaller than the standard per the zoning. Additional actions that will have to happen after your action today? Any change to a subdivision plat that's been recommended and approved? So the city council has approved the preliminary plat for the overall subdivision, and they will have to reapprove the preliminary plat with the revision. So this will be a standard revision of plat that will go to council, very much like your normal review and approval process of a preliminary plat. We often see changes made at final plat that occur only at city council. But in this case, because they're changing the preliminary, you get another look at it, another opportunity to ask questions and make recommendations. There is a change to the water allocation. So there was a water allocation associated with the previous one, and that's something that city council will handle through a water issues committee review and council when it gets to that stage in the process. So at this point, I would be happy to answer questions from a staff perspective. We do have representatives here by Zoom and in person for the developer, and I do have... I can't answer any questions you may have about process in the future.
Is there any questions for George?
I have a question, George. Total number of lots, phase one plus two plus three is 171?
Correct. The original preliminary plat was for 151 lots. The proposed revision adds 20 additional lots for 171.
How many are in one?
I have that on here, I think. I don't have it on here. I believe it's 84 lots in phase one.
20 or 13 in two?
13 in three and 73 lots in two. And you're checking my math, I can see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's 85 in phase one.
Is it 85?
Yeah, I had to do the math for the minutes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's in your staff report, too.
Okay. Thank you.
George, were those lots backup to each other? Is that a... Will that be any kind of utility easement or an access easement, or are they lot line to lot line?
They will be lot line to lot line in some cases. So if you look at the eastern edge of phase two, where it bumps up against phase one, they're back to back, but I believe there are utility easements that will lie across that area. The other cul-de-sacs have some separation of common area between the backs of the lots on those cul-de-sacs.
There is some kind of a separation. Thank you.
Little bit of a space.
Other questions? Stan, do you have any questions? I guess not.
I do not, yes.
Okay, thank you. George, when we looked at this before and did our approval on the southwest part of the plot, there was an access to a dirt road that heads over into the county. Now, is that little gap in those lots there in the southwest still going to be the access for the dirt road for emergency access?
The proposed revised preliminary plat does not show a connection at that point. So that was here, under the original preliminary plat.
Right.
It is and was an unimproved road on both sides of the line. It was to meet fire department requirements, but not necessarily a paved street.
Right.
Under the proposed change, that connection is gone. So there is no longer shown an emergency connection at that end. Primary effect of not having it is that all of the lots in the subdivision, from halfway through phase one westward, will be subject to higher fire sprinkler requirements. They'll have to fire sprinkler the buildings, and that will be something that's taken into account when we do our building permitting.
Well, it looks like there's a gap in the lots along the southwest side. Could that be tapped into the dirt roads over there? Because if you look at an aerial map of that, you got that dirt road pretty much there already.
Already there. That is certainly a possibility. That is common area, and the original preliminary plat showed that connection by a common area. Do you want to talk about that? We have a representative of the developer.
Good morning, commission members. Vic Chapman, Chamberlain Development. We decided to go... Because part of the subdivision does not require the fire sprinklers in the homes, the remaining balance of them justified putting the sprinklers in the homes versus the expense of going out and making that road accessible with a fire truck. And to address your comment about an access point connecting, you know, we wouldn't want to encourage just any traffic. That was originally going to be a fire gated access emergency only.
So you prefer not to have it there?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from commission members?
I have one other question. We've increased open space in the second proposal, but we've added 20 homes?
20 additional lots.
Now, it's not our purvey, but just FYI, what percent increase would that be on
The additional lots over what was... I do not recall the original allocation of water, so I'm not sure how much was originally allocated to the subdivision. It's based on a particular count of the lots. So obviously, increasing it by 20 will increase the water allocation by 20. The subdivision is part of the water service area for Deepwell Ranch and has a separate set aside of water that it comes from. So that water was set aside for Deepwell Ranch development, and that's where it would come from to account for the additional 20, and that's where the water came from to account for the original preliminary plat of 151. So I apologize, I'm not sure what percentage increase that actually would be.
Would it just be 120 divided by 151? Is it linear or...?
The allocation would be linear for water because it's the same allocation for each residential unit.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, thanks, Don. I think about a previous meeting we had here where we heard people describing the, I think, the Dunkin' Donuts that wanted to go in on the corner there of Willow Creek and Pioneer Parkway. And we said, they said that the traffic was way too fast and way too much. And so now we're talking about adding another, what, 20 incremental houses, another 40 cars to that mix. And I wonder if the traffic planning takes this into account.
Well, I'm not a traffic planner. I can tell you that the difference with this location from the other is that all of these lots take access onto Pioneer Parkway, which is effectively an extension of a highway. It's designed to carry highway speed traffic. It's designed to carry highway volume traffic. So that's a little bit different than Willow Creek Road right at an intersection, which is where the other locations were. There was a lot of concern about that simply because of turning movements and the volume of traffic that was already on the roadway. Pioneer Parkway was designed for well over the amount of traffic it carries regularly, and I don't think the additional 20 cars on Pioneer Parkway will make an impact on it. Now, those 20 additional cars do go elsewhere in town, so yes, you would have more traffic, but only at that 20 lot account. Does that make sense? Sorry.
Thanks, George.
Anything else? Anybody from the public like to make a comment? If you'd like to add more to it, that'd be fine, our advocate.
We have a Jerry Verplank. You can unmute yourself. Jerry?
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, my name is Jerry Verplank. I live at 5806 Cinnamon Drive in Pinion Oaks. I've had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Worley and appreciate that time. My question, and I've enjoyed the conversation here, my question is, the water's coming from Deepwell Ranch, and there is a proposed water connection from this development into the Pinion Oaks, and I'd like some explanation as to why it's necessary for that connection to be made. I am in opposition to the alignment of that because it's going to come right in behind my home and travel along several of my neighbors in order to get through the right of way. So I'm looking forward for your answer.
I'm not sure that I can answer it with authority, but you can? Okay.
Yes, we are tying into the existing water line there on the southern property line in two locations, and we are looping within our development. It came from, as a suggestion from the engineering department, that we would consider running our system into Pinion Oaks because of some pressure issues that are being experienced by Pinion Oaks. So I think there's about a 1,500-foot of water line that we have agreed to run to the Pinion Oaks connection to help their water pressures. So that line strictly is to, at the engineers, or the city engineers, a recommendation to benefit Pinion Oaks.
So do I understand the reason is to off shed some of the water pressure from this development into our development? Is that my understanding?
Off shed in the sense that we have excessive... We have water pressure reducers at each of those locations that governs the pressure that comes into our subdivision. By us going to the expense of adding that water line does not benefit our subdivision at all. It's 100% benefit to the Pinion Oaks residents.
So is there a determined need for the water pressure to be increased in Pinion Oaks?
It's my understanding. I don't have the personal information, other than the city engineering department indicates that there's been water pressure issues in Pinion Oaks.
Yes. I'm asking this because my home is at the very top of the hill, the very top of the project, and I have no problem with water pressure or water volume, so I'm trying to get a better understanding. And in a conversation with Mr. Worley, we did have that discussion about the hills and the valleys within the city itself and the need to distribute water pressure here. I get that, but I don't see that this is a benefit necessarily to Pinion Oaks. Just wondering why we're going to be subject to this.
I would be extremely happy not to install 1,500 feet of water line, so I'm not opposed to it. We just agreed to it at the request of the city engineering department.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarity, because often water pressure issues aren't pressure issues for homeowners, they're pressure issues at fire hydrants. And if we don't have interconnected water systems, sometimes you have a situation where a fire truck hooks up to a fire hydrant and pumps the entire neighborhood empty in a short period of time, whereas loop connections will allow water to be drawn in from other areas. And it could be associated with the fire hydrant requirements.
Okay, that makes some sense to me. So if I'm understanding correctly, then the amount of water pressure that will be going into this new development can be more accurately and adequately used if some of it is offloaded to our area, which would enhance if the need were to arise that we needed that for that specific purpose. That's correct?
And we can provide additional information as this moves forward. So I can get our engineering folks to provide us some additional information about why the looping is a positive for Pinion Oaks as well as a necessity. Generally, we don't require developers to do something that we haven't determined that there is a need for when it comes to infrastructure outside of their development or beyond their development. So our folks have determined a need for that, and we can get an explanation of that need.
Yeah, because I can't imagine that Pinion Oaks would have been allowed to develop if there were insufficient water pressure and water supply to meet the requirements for that emergency need to begin with. So I'll look forward to getting some more information on that. That'll be interesting. The other thing I'd like to comment on that, and we've had this discussion before, I don't know if Dave Maynard's in on this call or not yet, and he may very well be, but the alignment of that water line coming from the termination of roadway number two going directly up to my property line and then going across, there's an existing utility easement up there, as opposed to going diagonally across the lot on the adjoining parcel of land and then connecting to the right of way. And I recognize that that easement would create an infringement on that eight acre parcel. I believe it's lot 151. I'm not sure of that particular lot number. I don't have that in front of me. But that would certainly be a more direct route to that, as opposed to coming along and going behind a number of homes, five or six homes there, right up against our property lines, expressing an opposition to that alignment, I guess.
Let me... This is Vic Chapman again. Just to reiterate, we do not have a need to dispel any water out of our subdivision. Scott Lyon, I believe, is on Zoom. Scott, do you have any more specific information that you've received from the city engineers regarding the need for that water line?
In my recollection, excuse me, Scott Lyon, Lyon Engineering, it was to provide us another feed into the subdivision. Again, as George reiterated, provide fire flow, sustaining fire flow as well, just because of the upper pressure limits experienced in the Arroyo Vista subdivision. So from those aspects, I think it's part of the GES code to try to have looping and extending utilities to your subdivision boundaries.
Okay. And as it relates to the alignment of that water line, Jerry is correct, to run a straight line would bisect the parcel. We always want to move things toward the perimeter to not conflict with any future home site that someone may choose. We do not have that sold, of course, and so we would not want to encumber that parcel with that easement through a usable piece of property and possibly a future home site that may be selected. So it is on our private property, and we are issuing an easement to the city for that. Excuse me, and I might add that there are no above structures in there that will be visible. So it's just, I'm assuming the actual construction and then revegetation of that area that he might be concerned about, but I don't know.
Okay. Anybody else online that has a question?
Doesn't look like it, sir.
Anybody from the public? Do I hear a motion concerning this application?
Butch Tracy, I would move to recommend the approval of PLN 21-004, revised preliminary plat of Hidden Hills subdivision.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Tom Hutchison, I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a quick question here. Is it okay for the commission members in the discussion to say what they think about the proposal, whether they support it or don't support it, or do we wait for the vote to do that?
You have the ability in your discussion to say what your opinion is, the actual opinion is reflected in the vote, so yes, certainly you could speak to it.
Any discussion?
The chair has a discussion. I have a challenge with taking away the emergency access. Now, I understand that the houses are going to be required to be sprinkled and that can give protection to them, but that emergency access is not only just for fire trucks, but you could have ambulances coming in there too that could not get through otherwise. Long cul-de-sacs, I believe you should have a emergency access there, not, you know, and have some protection so you're not having the public go through there. But, you know, that's my opinion, just to let you know on that part. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Kaylee, would you call?
Butch Tracy?
I would approve.
Thomas Hutchison?
I approve.
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Ted Gamboji?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
No.
The motion passes 4-1.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to the next item, do we need to take a little timeout?
It's a grand idea.
We will take 10-minute break. The next item on the agenda is ANX 21-005, a request for an annexation of four existing developed lots comprising 2.05 acres, APN 107-09-06006A, 107-09-06006B, 107-09-006D, 107-09-006E, and I ran out of numbers on that one.
You did fine, sir. Okay, let's get this started. So just a reminder regarding annexations as to the role of the planning commission. You don't get these very often, annexation requests are fairly rare. You probably recall the last one, AED, with all of the associated things that were part of that one. The two you have today are far less complicated, thank goodness, but we do want to just remind you that your primary job in an annexation is to initially determine which zoning in the city is the equivalent to the zoning in the county. The state statutes say that when you annex property, it gets an initial zoning that is no more dense than the county zoning. Sometimes they match up exactly and sometimes they're close and we have to make a determination. I think what you'll see today is they're pretty much identical. So just to point out the location of this, because it's not close to anything, anywhere. The area to be annexed, there are four small lots that are at the very south edge of the city of Prescott. They are just outside the boundaries of the corporate limits now, but they are in line with the south edge of the corporate boundaries of the city. They are adjacent to and south of Mountain Club and that area is in the county and will remain in the county. So this only affects the small four-lot area that I'm going to show you in just a moment. The properties in question are near water utilities in the city. The city does not provide water service outside of the corporate limits by its water policy. They have a problem with their water systems now, their wells and connected to one another, and it's insufficient for domestic needs, much less anything else. They desire to connect to the city's utilities, which are immediately adjacent to them, to the east and to the north, but to meet the city requirements under the water policy, they have to be incorporated into the city. So the four property owners in question got together and put an annexation application together, which is a lot of work, so they've gone to a great deal of time and expense in order to get this done. It requires an engineering company to be involved, so it's not four property owners asking, it's four property owners paying an engineer to do this. Their purpose is entirely to get into the city of Prescott and to connect to the city water system to solve their fairly significant water issues. The property is already developed, you'll notice aerial photography, there is a house on each of the four of the lots, and the four property owners have gotten together as a group to pursue this annexation request. The property in the county is identified under county zoning as R1L12. R1L is single-family residential with a site-built home, and the 12 is the minimum lot size in area. That is equivalent to the city's SF12, which happens to be the zoning of the city area immediately adjacent to this. Effectively, the zoning is the same, just one inside the city and one in the county. Staff is recommending that you endorse the SF12 zoning as the initial zoning for this, should council decide to annex it. In this particular case, the property owners do not desire nor need to have a rezoning of the property to anything other than the 12, because their development pattern, their lots are existing, and they match up very well with the city development immediately adjacent to them. In fact, they match up to that city development pattern better than the county development pattern immediately to their west that is within, within their immediate neighborhood. These are smaller lots, they're totally compatible with the single-family 12 of the subdivision that they would basically attach to. Given those circumstances, staff has made a recommendation to assign the initial zoning to this as single-family 12 if the city council chooses to pursue the annexation. And we're looking for you to support us on that single-family 12. And I've done my best to make this sound, you know, like a decision-making process, but if you're, yeah.
Questions for George?
George, I have a question. These four properties are part of this Cathedral Pines?
They were developed at the same time. I don't believe they were part of the original subdivision.
Okay, so it's an addition. And north, north and west of them are other houses too, correct?
Correct, so these are all located within the county, they're outside the city, corporate city limits, they're served by wells and septic systems, and they are not requesting an annexation.
How are they accessed?
There are private streets, so there's a street that comes through here, private road, and goes up here, connecting to private roads that continue out through here. So where you see a street name but there's no right-of-way shown, those are private drives, they're private roadways. So they're connected to the city at two points via a private roadway for vehicular access.
So are those three houses part of Cathedral Pines?
The ones to the north?
The ones to the north, yeah, north.
I do not believe they were part of the original subdivision similar to these four, and they are outside of the city.
They're outside the city, are they part of Cathedral Pines now?
No, again, I don't believe they're part of the subdivision plan.
The reason I'm asking that, is there any reason to, if those four have a problem with the wells, is there a reason why the other seven wouldn't have a problem with their wells?
Vagaries of water underground, at this point, they have not contacted us with a request to annex. Doesn't mean that at some point in the future, they couldn't run into a situation and ask to annex.
Are they on their own wells?
I believe there's shared wells for two of the four properties that are requesting annexation.
Right, but what about the rest of it, is it all?
I believe they're all wells and septics out there, yes. All wells and septics, no city services at all.
Gotcha, thank you.
Other questions for George?
George, what, how would this benefit the city?
One of the problems that we run into fairly regularly, and it's actually been discussed quite a bit at Water Issues Subcommittee's discussion of the new water policy, is that wells and septics are drawing water from the ground that are unmonitored, as opposed to city water, which is drawn through monitored wells. And septic systems discharge water that often doesn't end up back in the aquifer. The city discharges its treated water specifically in recharge to the aquifer. The benefit of having less septics and less wells is that there's better control over the water, there's better monitoring of the water, and we actually are able to take water and inject it directly into the aquifer through our recharge facilities. This will have a miniscule effect on that, but it is a step in the right direction as opposed to a step in the wrong direction, even if it's a short step.
So, so we get to sell water, number one, and then we get to charge for the sewer service and we discharge that effluent back into the?
We recharge into the aquifer, which benefits the aquifer and?
We get money twice, two ways and?
The offset for, the offset for the residents are that once they're annexed into the city, they are part of the city's fire and police protection, which is separate in the county. You pay an extra fee in the county for fire protection that they would no longer pay. The net to the property owners is probably going to be a zero, the benefit to the city is less wells and less septics, just on a very small scale in this case.
So those four homes are going to connect not only to the water but to the sewer?
I believe sewer connection is already available to them and the water is what they're seeking.
Are they on the sewer right now?
I believe they are on sewer right now.
Okay. What's your question? Okay. Another question I have is, the road that goes through there, comes in from the northwest part of this and exit out to the east, is not to the city standards, it's dirt and some paving. Is the city going to have to change that? Are the four homeowners going to have to change that, or is it just going to stay the way it is?
In all likelihood, it would stay the way it is. The roadway is a private road. If there is a concern about city access on the road, our garbage trucks or fire trucks using the road, there are minimum standards that they would have to improve the road to. At this point, I believe we have looked at that as part of the fire review of the proposed annexation, and it is currently acceptable. Obviously, that's something that we reevaluate all the time because of changing conditions. If it needs to be improved, the property owners will be responsible for the cost of the improvement because it is a private road.
Okay. Other questions for George?
I have a question, George. The question comes up because of this proposal, but in general, if, if we annex someone into the city, are, does the well get capped and does the septic tank get capped?
Usually not immediately, so the well is abandoned through a process required when you connect to the city water system. In this particular case, they need to connect to the city water system, so whatever wells are active out there will get capped. They will be abandoned, as the term the state uses. The, the septic systems are a little bit different circumstance. Again, in this case, I don't believe these four lots are on septic, I believe they're already on sewer, but in the case of a septic system, generally, the city's requirements are that when you reach a point where that septic system is non-functional, now you have to hook on the city central services.
Now, there's a home being built right to the east of this, so I imagine the sewer and the water goes there. So the four homeowners will pay for the water to hook into the end of the line there and up to their house?
They will extend the main and pay for the onsite connections to it, yes.
Okay. Other questions for George?
I don't have a question, I just wonder about the precedent that we're setting.
These are unusual requests. Generally speaking, the city annexes very large areas and they annex large areas that are undeveloped because that's where we have the most control and the most benefit from them. You get construction sales tax and you get a number of other things, including zoning control over the development that occurs. This one and the next one on your agenda are unusual in that they're already developed. So you're right, there may be a precedent, there won't be a legal precedent because every application stands on its own, but the concept of small areas like this wanting to annex into the city, it certainly remains a possibility. Under state law, there are some limitations. You have to have a minimum frontage on the city of at least 300 feet, so a really small annexation wouldn't meet that requirement. You have a width versus depth criteria, it can't be more than twice as wide as it is deep in order to, again, minimize problems the state had in the Phoenix area where strip annexations would occur, a very long strip of property that, that effectively blocked your neighboring communities out of a future annexation. So those criteria have to apply. You're not going to get a single lot unless that's a very large lot come in through this process. So had it been three of the four of them, they wouldn't have made it.
Other questions? Anybody from the public having comments or questions? If not, is there a motion?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison here. I make a motion to approve ANX 21-005.
We have a motion, a second?
I'd second it. Butch Tracy?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify for the minutes, the motion is related to establishing the single-family 12 zoning.
So it'll be a motion to have equivalent zoning to be single-family SF12?
Correct.
Tom, is that okay?
So we'll reflect it both ways in the motion.
Thank you, George.
No problem.
All right. Any further discussion? Let's do a vote, Kaylee?
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Ted Gamboji?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And now we get to number five. Our next one is ANX 21-004 and REZ 21-009, a request for annexation of 6.158 acres and a rezoning from SF35, single-family 35, to MFH, multifamily high-density on APN 114-06-104H. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is similar to the previous one in that it's a relatively small annexation area. Again, the planning commission's roles are first to determine the appropriate city zoning for the property, and in this case, a rezoning request is part of the annexation. So they're asking to change the zoning, and I'll explain the reason for that in just a moment. So you will have two motions, one to establish the initial zoning and one on the proposed rezoning. The property is south of the VA Cemetery, it's off of Overland Drive, if you're familiar with the eastern edge of downtown. The property is manufactured home park. It is adjacent to the city, it meets the criteria for the length versus width under state statutes, and it is accessed via Gurley Street and Overland to the area. The city-zoned property around it is single-family 35, business general, and multifamily medium. The multifamily medium is important because of something I'm going to talk to you about in just a minute in regard to the rezoning. The property in question is developed, it's already an existing manufactured home park. It is similar to the previous situation, in trouble with water. And wanting to annex into the city will benefit them in that it would allow for connection to city water utilities. They are connected to city sewer, so again, we have a situation where there's already a partial connection, and city water service is within a few hundred feet of the city limit lines adjacent to them and could be connected relatively easily. The owners of the property, similar to the previous discussion, would be responsible for extending utilities and complying with all city requirements, including in this case, some changes to the internal water case, some changes to the internal water layout of the park in order to provide for additional fire safety and a number of additional fire hydrants to meet city requirements. Again, once you come into the city, we're going to make sure that you meet our fire safety requirements. The area in question, again, lying in the county, actually has an R1L 35 designation. R1L 35 means a minimum lot size of 35,000, but R1L means a single home, site-built home on a lot. The development doesn't match that zoning. It is a pre-existing legal non-conforming in the county. It's not single-family residential. It is something different than that, multifamily residential. The city's initial zoning recommendation, or staff's initial zoning recommendation, is the city equivalent is SF 35. That's the same, 35,000 square foot, single-family home only. Matches the county zoning, and that's our recommendation for the initial zoning. However, that zoning doesn't match the development. The actual development is a multifamily development. The property is occupied by the manufactured home park. It is a single parcel of ground. The folks in the manufactured homes do not own the ground. It's not single-family. So under our rules, under our definitions, it's a multifamily development. So the city's recommendation, the city staff's recommendation, is to rezone it to something that makes it legal, not a non-conforming. And to do that, the city's lowest level of zoning that makes the manufactured home park a legal use of the property is multifamily high-density, which is compatible with the adjacent commercial and multifamily medium-density already existing inside the corporate limits. So by rezoning it to multifamily high, you're creating a conforming situation and not a non-conforming situation, and you're matching it up as closely as reasonable to the adjacent zoning districts that are already in the city. So again, our recommendation is multifamily high for the rezoning. So initial zoning in would be SF 35, and rezoning to make it a compatible land use at multifamily Happy to answer any questions you may have. We do have representatives of the property owners here, and they can answer questions if you get beyond typical zoning questions.
Questions for George?
Yeah, Commissioner Galagoski, I do have a question, George.
Sure.
To your knowledge, you've been here for a bit. This is an area known as Government Canyon. Has there ever been a request to annex any portion of this area before? I mean, it's been there, well-established for a long time, right adjacent to our city. Kind of shocked that it is county. But to your knowledge, have we had any requests bigger than this in the area? And what has been any reason why they haven't been incorporated in the city?
At the time I've been here, the only request that we've had for consideration of an annexation was a larger piece of property to the south that did not abut the city limit lines. So you can't annex unless you actually touch the city limit lines. The intervening property that touched the city limit lines, property owner of that property was not interested in annexing, and so the larger annexation request dissipated. Again, without a frontage on the city limit lines, there's no way to pursue an annexation, and you can't force a property owner to annex his property through that process, not a voluntary annexation. So in that case, the property owner of the larger property did not pursue the annexation. This being somewhat different in that there are boundaries on two sides of this property that both boundaries meet the minimum requirements under statute to allow the annexation. Hope that answered the question. The answer is, there was one request, it never went anywhere.
No, that's good. I just needed to know if there wasn't reasons that, in the past, why they haven't been incorporated, but totally understand that this is right next or adjacent to our city location, so it's making more sense to me. Thanks.
No problem. One comment, too, about the adjacent properties south of this that lie in the county. As you continue to go south, the differential of elevation between what's in the city and what's in the county becomes more and more significant. Government Canyon gets deeper as you go south. So there's an interconnectivity problem there that, in fact, doesn't really allow for road connectivity through that area, except at this one location.
Okay. Other questions? George, I have a couple.
Certainly.
How many families live there right now? Do we know?
I don't know, but again, we have representatives here can answer that.
Can you approach the microphone, please?
Hi, thank you, George. Murray Sharkey, I'm the engineer for the owner of the property who's Stewart Gross Sun Home Communities. And I want to go back. It was nice being the last people presenting, because I'll go back and some of the things that you guys brought up, Ted's point of the devil in the details. We took care of all the details and answer what you said. There are 58 units in the park right now and a single laundry room. And to add to that point of the 58 you just talked about...
Fifty-two.
What's that?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two? Fifty-two. And to add to that point, you just had an annexation or an approval of a change to add 20 units. The 52 units use a total of 4,000 gallons per day, based on records that I have reviewed over the last four to five years from our pumping out of the wells that we have and our discharge. We're already connected, and our discharge into the city's wastewater system. And the 20 units that you approved additionally, and my ability to design water for those, you're usually talking about 10,000 gallons. So it's very little impact on the water needs. And to bring up something else that Mr. Hutchison brought up about, there's a new word. We don't call it affordable housing anymore. It's workforce housing. We have 52 units that charge less than $600 a month for rent. And the changes that you're going to be making with the Granite Creek approval, you're going to need more people that are, can live on the salaries and live in a place where they're spending $600, not $2,000, in many of your new apartment communities. So I went a bit beyond that number of units, but I think it's all important. It's a workforce or affordable housing unit that's 20-minute walk to downtown, and the people consider themselves city residents. That's where they shop. That's where they spend their money. It's where they spend their time. So unlike that other annexation, which is way down the other end, this is 20-minute walk to downtown, and that's what these people live on. And Sun Home Communities also bought the, owns, now owns, the Bradshaw Apartments. And again, it's not really high rent, but since they bought the properties in 2016, they've put in over $1 million of improvements in both areas, and this is going to be another $500,000 investment to tie into the water. And the process was, working with George, we did preliminary plans, and I was sent to different departments for review, and I've worked with those departments and primarily fire and public works. And we've come together with a significant detailed plan to upgrade the area. And George talked about limited, there's no fire protection right now. And with the size of the line we're putting in, we're now able to put in hydrants, and we're also going to upgrade the roads. We've already done a geotechnical investigation to show that the roads can handle the fire trucks. We have to do some improvements to the paving, and the city staff and public utilities and in fire are fairly happy with what we've done. But once we're annexed, then we'll do the actual detailed design.
Okay. Since you're up here, I have another question on it. In your application, the property is anticipated to remain a manufactured home park, and I have to compliment you on that park. I've been out there, looked at it. It's well-maintained. It's a nice-looking facility on it. It's not as some people view manufactured housing parks look like. So I think you've done a good job on that. Are you planning to do anything to change that down the road? Because coming into the city and having the water, you've got much more valuable land now.
No, we're not. No, we would keep it. It's not... Between New Mexico and Arizona, we've got 17 properties, and the majority are mobile home parks. That's kind of what we specialize in. I mean, we do have some apartments, like Bradshaw, 140, 180, Bradshaw Drive, but it's mostly mobile home parks, and no, that wouldn't be our intention, and we have zero plans to change it.
Well, other than to upgrade, they're continuing to upgrade. They put a new wall on the front. They do new landscaping. And when I did the due diligence, I said, "Stewart, don't buy it." And he says, "No, that's a great location." And there was literally wastewater running out into the ground and into the creek. And shortly after we bought it, we went through the process of hooking up the park, getting rid of the septic systems, and putting in a costly connection through the Prescott Tony and then tying into the city sewer. And by the way, the county has responsibility for closing out systems that's delegated to the county, and you have to follow their rules for closing out these septic systems. And the same thing, the state also regulates the wells, and everything has to be done according to those requirements.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
And since the audience is all city staff, I imagine there's no comments there. Anybody online that has on this item?
I do not see anyone requesting to speak, no.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Dan, can I ask George a question?
Sure.
George, if this is approved as a multifamily high-density zoning, roughly what does that allow that property to become? How many places could be added to that property? How many existing or new sites could be?
Sorry, give me just a moment. I don't recall the acreage. The multifamily high would allow development at a density of up to 32 units per acre. So 32 units times six would be the maximum number of units that could be built there if it were to change from a manufactured home park, which is a spread-out version of multifamily to something of higher density.
So there could be a whole lot more places on this property?
There could be if the manufactured home park were replaced with an apartment complex.
Mary?
Come on.
Come up to the microphone, please.
Can you put back the slide on the park itself? There you go. If you look at the park, and Mr. Michaelman said that he was there, there's a lot of elevation change. The northwest corner is a wetland. There's a creek that goes through that side. The empty space that you see down in the southwest portion, there are four units there. Those are the storage tanks we needed for water because we didn't have an adequate supply. So, and where those trailers are at the very south end was where there was a treatment system. So the only area that we could possibly add a few units to is into that southwest corner. And once we're connected and we don't need that space for the water, there was some thought of maybe adding a few units, correct?
If at all.
But practically, it's not going to be six times 35. There's no space for any more units than maybe four or five or six down in that lower left-hand corner. So what the numbers might come up with, that space doesn't accommodate anymore. Hopefully, that answers your question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Also, I don't remember. I think it might have been you that mentioned about if we would keep it as a mobile home park. And actually, you know, in the market, because mobile home parks are more scarce than apartments, they have a lower cap rate, so which means, you know, if A is a mobile home park and B is an apartment building, and they make the same amount of money, the mobile home park's actually worth more than the apartment building. So, you know, apartment buildings are getting built all over the place, and, you know, not that many people are building mobile home parks unless it's really in a rural area in the middle of nowhere. So they're actually more valuable if they make the same amount, you know, all things being equal.
Just a point of order.
Could you give us your name and your address, please? We have your engineer, but I don't remember if you have.
Okay, it's Stewart Gross. My work address?
That's fine.
609 East Oregon Avenue, Suite 200, and it's Phoenix, Arizona, obviously. Phoenix, 85012.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are these mobile homes, I mean, some established? I mean, is it something that changes? Do they come and go? Do they... Does that ever happen?
They...
The park's been around for 60 years.
Yeah, there are some homes that are, you know, that have been there a long time, but, you know, sometimes somebody will pull one out, and then, you know, you find a new one to put into it. There are some amount, maybe about a dozen, are actually RVs on the, you know, the spaces, and there are permanent people. You know, I would like to convert those to, you know, as many as possible to, you know, just mobile homes and not RVs. One of the benefits, although in this economy, I don't know how important it is, but, you know, having a few RVs come in, you know, it gives people a chance. It was always good for marketing, you know, for an owner of a park because it was always bringing kind of new blood in, and people, "Oh, I like living here. I want to buy a house here," or, you know, "Bring a house in," or something like that. But now, housing is so scarce, you know, in Phoenix or Prescott or that, you know, I'm not sure that's quite as important as it was five years ago.
Do you have any restrictions that way, as far as something new coming in? Does it have to be a certain year or a...
It's got to be post-Tod, and also the, you know, it's got to fit the, you know, it's got to be able to fit the space with the, you know, whatever the legal setbacks are. But, I mean, we're not going to bring a home that was built, you know, from 1950 in.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion?
So again, reminder, Mr. Chairman, there are two motions we're seeking, one for the initial zoning and one for a rezoning.
And procedurally, we're going to vote on the first motion and then the second motion.
Correct. There are two separate motions.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I don't have any.
I would move to recommend the initial zoning to be single-family SF 35.
We have a motion. Is there a second? If we don't have a second, then the motion dies.
You can make a second.
Chair, will I make?
I'm going to second it. This is Stan.
Okay. We have a motion seconded. Any further discussion?
I have, yeah, I'd like to, I want to go on record for the city council. This is a second proposal received today, and although water is of great interest to the city of Prescott, it's not the purvey of the planning commission. Yet these two annexations involve, the reason for annexation... Yet these two annexations involve, the reason for annexation is water. And I'm going to vote to approve it. I wanted to compliment the engineer, by the way. Very good analysis and great quotes. I'm going to vote to approve it, but I think we need a position from the city council. Tom was concerned about precedent. I, too, agree with Tom that we ought to have a position on annexation, these small annexations for the purpose of getting water. We've heard the argument about we can meet, we can measure the water better than if it comes out of a well, and we've got, we can return the water to the aquifer, not the water, but the refuge to the aquifer versus a well and a septic tank. It's a good argument, but I still think we ought to have a position paper out of the city when it comes to annexations for the purpose of getting city water.
Red?
Great point, Commissioner Gambogi. And I think that with the council currently looking at adopting a new water policy that slightly changes some aspects of the way that we deliver water and the way that we view annexation areas, I think that that is an absolutely fair request. I also, just a little bit more editorially speaking as the development director, would like to challenge you guys to think of these annexation areas as opportunities for the city to be a better steward of the water that we are serving in the active management area. Where we have control over what is coming out of the aquifer and going back into the aquifer, we are being better conservationists. Where we have straws in the aquifer and we have septic systems that we know are impacting our creeks in a negative way, we have a responsibility to look toward the options to serve water to areas not necessarily outside of the city limits, and these are unique annexation requests. But the conservation proposal really is to remove as many straws in the aquifer and to close as many septic system leach fields as possible. That's the job of the city as the steward and the water service provider and the AMA.
And my, my reason for saying that is I think this should be within the purvey of the planning commission, because if we have applicants coming to us and we approve it, and then we turn around and the city council disapproves it because of the water policy, that then we've gone through an exhaustive process, and it's not fair to the applicant. So the reason I say that is I want to clear definition from the city. And in the final analysis, I think if we're going to entertain annexations for the purpose of city water, that, that ought to come within our purvey.
I agree.
Kaylee, would you do the vote?
Yes, Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Ted Gambogi?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes, 5-0. And just for my clarification for the minutes, this motion also approved the annexation portion, or will that come with number two?
The annexation approval actually only occurs at the city council. So the planning commission's role is to establish the zoning. Certainly, discussion of the, the annexation is part of your purview and should be discussed here, but you're not actually approving the annexation or recommending an approval of the annexation.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
We have a proposed second motion.
Butch Tracy?
I'd like to move, we recommend rezoning to multifamily high-density MFH.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Ted Gambogi. I, I second the motion.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call the roll?
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Ted Gambogi?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes, 5-0.
Okay. Any staff updates?
No.
Anything further on the move or no? No?
No.
Okay, good guess.
It will happen, it will happen eventually.
All right. I now adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for attending.